But I think we have a quorum here.
Good morning.
So I want to call this meeting to order.
Yes.
Would you offer an invocation?
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for your love, your blessing on us. We pray, God, today as we meet together that you would continue to guide us as a committee, and pray your blessing on our city in your name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, in whose justice for all. Roll call, please.
Robert and Serpy.
He will not be here. He's ill.
Richard Donley.
There.
Roger Brunswick. Barbara Craig.
Here.
Chairman Kerlander.
Here.
James Worster.
Here.
Russ Wynn.
Here.
So I need a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Richard Donley.
Yes.
Roger Brunswick. Barbara Craig.
Yes.
Chairman Kerlander.
Yes.
James Worster.
James, yes.
Russ Wynn.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. It's the time for public comment, but seeing no one here other than officials will proceed. The purpose of today's meeting is to kind of summarize where we are and what our presentation is going to be to the City Council on the 20th. And I would hope that we could all be at that meeting. And we'll, as we go through this, we'll decide how we'll proceed at that meeting. We'll discuss that, how you want to...
That's nine, 9:00 AM?
I believe that's a...
That's a morning session, yes.
That's a morning meeting, yes. That is a morning meeting.
Correct.
So, Mr. Domer, are you going to present or is Mike?
I'll get this started.
Okay.
And we'll both kind of work our way through this. If you remember correctly, we decided to have this meeting because it gave us enough time to make sure that the examples we were going to present to council adequately reflected the comments and the intentions that you have formulated over the past four or five meetings. And so we have put together an example, or a list of examples, some of which you are familiar with, some of which you are seeing for the first time. Those you're seeing for the first time actually came from development orders that had been filed in our office and, which we thought was consistent with what you're saying, a lot of the detail that you had hoped to see in development orders to be moved up into the zoning process. And we can work our way through these, but the intention was that these examples would show all, or at least a portion of, in each one of these areas that you wanted to see that you are not currently seeing. So, to work our way from...
I had a... I wondered about the order of these things. Did you put these in a particular order?
No, sir, there was not really a particular order to them.
Okay, because it...
There will be when they're going to the council.
Yeah, it seems to me that there's a better order for this.
Yeah, well, they're, yes, there is a way that they can flow a little easier.
Yeah, okay, good.
So, your first page is also the page on the left side of the screen shows sign detail. Now, currently in the zoning, you rarely see a lot of information on signs, and especially for residential projects. And we've talked at the past couple of meetings about how you want to see entry features and signs as they would be proposed, so at least you can figure out what the property's going to look like as it's constructed. And this shows that detail both from a plan perspective and also a color rendering perspective. It also shows information on the wall that they wish to put around the boundary of the property. Now, in terms of sign and entry features, now I realize that this is a simple sign, but is this the type of detail that you would be looking to see as part of a project? Or would be other areas that you wished were included? Because I see the landscaping, there's the plan view, and then there's the rendering. It also talks about the wall, as to what the materials are.
Can I ask a question?
Ma'am.
One of the things that would interest me to be able to see is how this sign fits in with the area around it, that sort of sense of, you know, is it right on the road? Is it back in a, you know, entree road or whatever? Just so you have a sense of how important this is to the public perspective.
Yes, ma'am. And on the second page, or on the right side of the screen, both of them are the same, they would show you exactly where that sign was in relation to the property boundary and adjacent areas.
And that would be?
The second page.
No, I'm just trying to say, see where the sign would be.
I guess it'd be right here, it looks like.
Yeah. They're labeled on each side. There's the entrance sign with the landscaping around it.
In the absence of glasses, this is a little bit challenging.
Yes.
They seem to have entrance signs on two sides. Would it be the same side?
Yes.
Idea would be on both sides, okay. And here again, Benita Crossing Boulevard. Would the presentation label what this road is in front?
It's labeled.
This says right here, private.
It's Benita Crossing Boulevard.
No, but that's what the road is going up in there. I was talking about what the road is. It's going this way.
That's going into the project?
No, the one that's going, this part, what is this thing along here?
Benita Crossing Boulevard.
Right here, that's what this is right here.
All right, I thought that was what was going up in here, because it's like an arrow, but, okay.
And the print's smaller.
Yes, the print is.
I may need my glasses. I may need you.
So, in terms of the signage, are we, are we okay?
Yes, I'm okay. I just, I mean, the only thing that interested me is how that fit into the community around it, which is the major reason you want to see what the sign looks like, because it's going to be how it affects the public view of it.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to point out that we're going to lose Mr. Donley at 9:40.
Okay.
And I think it's important that he be here for the bulk of this.
I think that we can get through, if we can't get through it, we're going to be closed.
Yeah.
The next page, and I don't know who has the, oh, thank you, shows a roof plan. We talked about how we wanted to see how the roofs were going to be constructed. And that shows you the general pitch and direction of the roof.
Would this be misleading to an applicant, because it has all this ventilation added area calculations and a lot of technical stuff?
You're right, yes, sir, it does. I think the thing that we're trying to take away from what we're doing right now is not everything on this page would be applicable in terms of a zoning submittal. Are you comfortable with the picture itself and the images itself to help represent a roof plan and then provide some calculations or some notes for pitch and height and material, things like that? I think that's kind of what we're going for. What you're going to see in a lot of these drawings that John goes through is more detail than what you're requesting, but that's because we're pulling this info from the development order submittal, which has all that additional info that you're wanting, plus more.
But this is not going to appear on the submittal to council.
No, no.
Let's not.
Unless that's the wish of the, right, okay.
My intention with this slide is simply the drawing itself, because I think that that kind of gets to what you had requested in terms of really figuring out what the building's going to look like and what the architecture's going to look like.
Then in terms of presenting this to the council, might it be wise to sort of X-out those things that would not be required, so the council isn't thinking, as Mr. Donley did, that maybe we're asking for too much at this point?
Let's see what we can do in terms of the slide, and depending on what we're technically able to accomplish.
Just take it off. I think we could do that.
I think we can clip it and...
Yeah.
I'd have to use a lot of whiteout.
Paste overs.
Okay.
And just make a quick copy and...
Page three is...
That would be page three. Now getting on to page four. You had gotten into the landscaping and what this shows. And once again, this might be a little more detail than you would be requesting, but we would be looking to show those areas that have landscape buffers, those areas that show general trees, where they are in relation to the parking and buildings.
I think the thing that's important to note on this slide is that it tells you the type of buffer, the width of the buffer, and then also whether or not a buffer is required along that particular property line.
And if they're requesting a variance...
If they're requesting a deviation would probably be, would appear as well.
Correct.
Yes, correct.
And so there is a lot of detail on this page, but that's really the focus of it. So if there's not really any questions on that, we will get to the next slide, which is one that you have seen before, and this is one, if you remember correctly, is the Naples Hotel that we discussed. And it's the artistic rendering, which is intended to show generally the building behind the landscaping and in relation to the roadway itself or roadways.
Would this be your first page?
I would think it would be the way we'd want to kick this off, yes. But I'll make a note to make sure I don't forget between now and then.
No, you won't forget. Only I forget.
John, I'd like to suggest that maybe that roof plan, you have to really kind of get into it to understand it, that we just talked about a minute ago. This plan really shows what's happening with the hips and so forth on the ends. So maybe that roof plan's not needed if this one is shown.
Well, the roof plan, we had put in there because we had talked about, where was the slide? We had talked about the Astero project that had showed a general architecture for the facade and also had shown the roof line. But the idea that you had always expressed was to possibly include the roof plan. We don't have to put it as one of the slides.
Just a thought.
And I'm just as happy either way, because I think that this, this plan and one of the other examples that we have further on in the slideshow does show how the roof's going to be generally constructed, but it doesn't show it specifically on its own. So that's entirely up to you.
I'm just, for me, I'm not familiar with a lot of what you guys, that's been your work for Joe Citizen coming in and not familiar with the construction. A lot of times I look at this page. And it, you know, the roof plan, and I'm looking at it, and it's like, okay, I get what you're trying to do, but visually, the other page shows what you're saying. You know, I mean, I'm just saying.
Do we want to get rid of this roof plan?
That's just my, you know, somebody coming in not familiar with that, you know?
No, it just, yeah, I think you're absolutely right.
Roof plan is standard application for a project.
Leave it in.
Okay.
Okay.
I will leave it in, but I'll know if there's concerns. We've got both sides of the argument on this.
Can I just raise a point that we did last time that I think is important, too? Is that this is a picture that looks beautiful, but it's not likely to be the first day. And so that I think that when you're going to present something like this, particularly to citizens, that it ought to say, "rendering four years later," or "five to 10 years later," and just so you have a sense that you're not going to, on day one, look like this.
And we had had a brief discussion. I don't remember what the...
We had more than a brief discussion.
Correct. Did you want both the time of planning and the time of maturity?
We wanted...
I think so. That's what you...
I thought we said we wanted time of maturity. I was surprised by that myself. But my recollection was...
You're right. I remember that, too.
That we said time of maturity.
It was mentioned, yeah.
And I didn't understand that, but I was in the minority, so I could, and...
But I think we want to have something on this picture say that time of maturity is like five years from now or something, or whatever.
Oh, that is exactly right, and that's not a problem. And I think that as long as everybody knows that the trees that are planted and the vegetation is planted will not be at that height.
So, I think when we present this to council, or as we're going through this, we will always make the point that this is time of maturity, that we're showing landscaping.
Yes, sir.
I think sometimes, to me, it's like I would have never thought about this being, if I would have looked at this, and I think a lot of people, they will say, "Oh, that's how it's going to look initially."
Yeah.
But I think those of us, those of you that are in the business for years, you look at that and you go, "Oh, that's a five-year plan." However, it's just like me being in the church work. You know, we get so used to a certain style of service that it takes a first-time guest to come in, and you almost have to present, you almost have to do things as if you are a first time, you know, like, not to say dumb it down, but almost to the point of a person that's not used to seeing this day in and day out, you know? And so communicate that, as if a person that's, you know, they're not skilled in looking at that.
And didn't we also say that there would be something in the landscape plan that would say how tall the first planting's had to be, so you couldn't put in, you know, brand-new saplings or something?
We do have minimum standards for the time of planting, and so that, we could have those labeled. But I think that it's going to be labeled as canopy trees are a minimum of 18 feet, shrubs must be installed at a minimum of 24 inches.
That kind of information helps, I think.
Correct.
It would help me to say, "And how tall is that tree?"
So it's this, the next page is the one that troubles me. My only comment is, are you kidding? You want me to read that?
Well, you know, it's a lot easier to read when it's printed on a 24 by 36, however...
Because it's impossible for me to read it.
Even with your glasses.
Even with my glasses.
However, what I would like for you to take away from this is if you will look in the parking area, it's easier to see the squiggly lines that show the general flow of the drainage.
You show that?
Yeah, that was the big...
Yes, well, it's not much better on the screen, but I can point to.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, so you see those arrows there.
Yeah, I see.
Now, we generally get little squiggly arrows, but what I like from this plan that's a little more detailed than what you normally receive is the fact that there are spot elevations that show you why the water is flowing in certain directions. You can see if one elevation is higher than another, obviously the water's going to be rolling downhill. This level of detail is probably, once again, a little bit more than what you're going to be looking for, but to a certain extent, certain spot elevations or certain elevations that they're calling for that back up as to why the drainage is flowing in a certain direction, I think is along the lines of what you requested. What you have received now is basically a narrative saying we're going to drain the site, turn it into a lake, and dump the lake out onto the right-of-way when it discharges. And I think you've been looking for a lot more detail when it comes to how it's going to actually function.
With regard to the drainage portion of this, it seems to me that in addition to knowing, for us wanting to understand how the water's going to flow here, how it's going, how our property's going to drain, I think it would be helpful to know how the surrounding area drains onto this property. Now, that's not an applicant. I don't think an applicant would be required to submit that, but does that make any sense, or am I...
It makes perfect sense. I'm trying to actually think of how best to formulate that, but let me write that down, because I think that...
Yeah, because the whole point of this is not just to look at the property itself, but how this change that they're requesting affects the properties around it.
One of the things that applicants do tend to provide, and they do currently provide this at the zoning stage, is some type of brief description of historic flow for the area, so you know whether or not it flows east to west, west to east, and then how that relates to the specific property. So, yeah, we can make sure that that's made a little bit more clear in the submittals for you guys. That's not a problem.
And if you don't mind, I wouldn't mind handling it from a very general standpoint right now. And the only reason I say that is because I'm trying to figure out exactly how we're going to work that stormwater modeling data into the overall process. And I don't know if that's going to be the cure for this, or if there's going to be different information that would be needed, because I think that what you're wanting for is reasonable. It's just a matter of how do we bring that data forward.
Has there been any further developments with regard to that software package up in Sarasota?
We are putting the language together to bring back to council for their adoption. So that will be one of the things that they, that we changed in our submittal requirements and also in our review standards. And some of the things we're trying to do, just through the application submittal requirements, other things need to be changed in the land development code.
If, in some upcoming meeting of the zoning board, could you give us a short presentation of how that's going to work, where you're going to bring Matt in?
Oh, yes, I'll bring somebody that knows how to...
How it works?
Yes. I will...
This is a big, big development, because if it really works,
that's a huge...
It's a game changer, because you will know with a fair amount of precision what's going to happen, and what's going to flood, and what's not going to flood.
I would suggest that you might want to look elsewhere for another drawing to submit. I mean, you must have a lot of stuff in the archives of the building department.
I agree.
This, I mean, this says "construction set," right? And it's very misleading. We aren't asking an applicant to provide a construction set. There must be, there must be another project somewhere that you could research that come up with a better, more clear drawing.
So again, we're taking this from the development order submittal. So what we can do, which is what we're going to do on other drawings, is we can clip out certain parts and make it less...
Busy.
Busy, so to speak. But again, I think the thing that John's trying to hammer home is the comfort level of the detail of the drainage arrows, the fact that there's spot elevations on there, that type of detail. So when it goes for it, it's not going to say "construction set" on it or anything like that. We're really just trying to hammer home the, what about the pictures you like? What about you don't like? So, thank you for that.
And I understand your point. If we find a better example...
You might want to search, do some searching.
But what we're getting right now, at least in our office, when somebody turns something in with that level of detail, it is going to be for the construction.
Right.
All right, the next slide that you're going to look at is the architectural rendering. And what you'll do, what you'll also see on there is not only is it the architectural rendering, but those little sticks with the labels on them also represent the colors that will be used for the building.
That's good.
Are we, we're okay with that?
Yeah.
I didn't think there'd be much comment on that one. The next slide is what I think one of the things you had asked for, which I thought was a pretty, pretty good idea, was the aerial rendering placed over an existing aerial photograph. So that way you can see how the proposed project's going to fit in with the existing neighborhood. I don't know if there's too much explanation that's needed for this one, or that's... The next slide is a cross-section map that we had talked about. Now, this one, this one's good, but it generally shows the same type of relationship for different portions of a property. But it does show from the property line, past the berm, to the first set of garages, across the parking lot, into the next, into the apartment buildings. Cross-sections are generally cross-sections. If there's something else that you would like to see in there, I know that there's been, we've also had cross-sections that show a little bit more in terms of landscaping. Would that be something you'd be interested in showing on there?
You might want to show the, I mean, the question usually comes up, what are the neighbors going to see?
And... Did you want to do essentially a line-of-sight type detail? Okay. Right?
Yeah. I agree.
Okay. Anything else we would like to discuss on the cross-sections? No? Yes? Okay, the next slide is the overall site plan. And what you'll see on this one that is, well, what I hope you would see, but is a little difficult to read, it does show the parking areas, it does show a lot more specifics that you have discussed that you have not seen on your master concept plans.
John?
Yes, sir.
If I might suggest that this plan would be a perfect place to show your drainage, as opposed to the complicated plan submitted earlier with arrows on which way the water... I assume it's all going to the lake and eventually discharges to the south in this particular... And it could be very simple with this, a few arrows.
There actually is one a few pages back that identifies that. One of the things that we knew you wanted to see was have this concept plan overweight on top of an aerial. The applicant at the time actually took it one step further. They put the concept plan overweight on top of an aerial and then showed how the water drains.
So if you see the water management slide...
We're getting there.
Bingo.
Yep, we're getting there.
Thank you.
Any other concerns for the master concept plan? Okay. All right, the next plan shows the, is essentially the same plan, but it's got a little bit of color on it. Easier to see what's going to be paved, what's going to be pervious.
This is one of the places I think it would be useful for those of us who may not know exactly where this is, to identify some of these businesses and what this community is that's behind here, so that you know what you're looking at. So, just not a whole bunch of houses. I assume there must be some sort of like a wall between this and these housing developments and this, what appears to be apartment development. But identify that further, so you know what you're looking at, I think, would be helpful. And these must be businesses out here. If you said, you know, this is McDonald's, there's whatever it is, I could maybe have a sense of what I was looking at, where I was looking.
We can do that. We just talked about the water management plan on the master concept plan. I don't know if there's any more comments on that. And then the last slide is the interconnectivity or the access map that shows the sidewalks, new sidewalk layout, proposed crosswalks, that type of thing. What I like about this one, it is a relatively compact site, so it's not that hard to see how it works both internally and externally.
And while we do have connection plans and things like that within the city, when we met with the subcommittee, they really liked the fact that each of the access points and the type of access was color-coded and labeled differently. And we didn't have that, which is why we pulled this one from an Astero project. But we could definitely use this as representative of what you could be seeing in the future.
Now, those are all the examples that we have brought, and those are the ones we intended to present to council. If we have missed something, or you want other things called light...
Okay, so we had three major categories that we're submitting, architecture, site plan, and landscaping. Let's go back to our architecture. We had in a bunch of subtopics under the architecture heading. Are we going to cover all of those?
We'll walk through all the lists that was created in the subcommittees and point out those areas. That's the, I know we went through it really quick this morning.
Right.
But the purpose of these, and we might even add one or two if we don't think that we can give good examples of all those, but the purpose of the presentation is to provide visual representation of that list. So the list is the basis of the presentation. So, yes, sir, and when we go back and take a look at it, I think we might add one or two more slides, but it'll just be, not to add more of a list, but to provide better examples for that list.
Right, but I think we have to, in fairness, we have to show council the list.
That's what we created as part of the subcommittees and what we all discussed as a group. Yes, sir.
And then get into this.
Yes, sir, but I would almost use this to visually depict...
Right.
So...
Provided you have all of it depicted.
Yes, well, yes, sir, we have to.
The worst thing is that we mislead them.
Yes, sir.
Right, we fail to tell them something we should be telling them.
And we, if, we even pushed this back. We asked you, and you were kind enough to let us push this back one council meeting to make sure that we had the exhibits right, to make sure the presentation was going to actually include all of those areas that you had addressed and all of those items that you had talked about and approved. So, that's the purpose of us being there.
Thank you.
I think what might be very helpful here is to take that list and say which slides here are the visual depiction of this particular example, so that you know if the list says, you know, want to show a better picture of how this fits into the area around it. See slide number A, B, C, D, E, F, G, whichever it is. Just because what we're trying to do is get them to pass an ordinance that will address the list, not the pictures so much.
Correct.
And I think the whole point of the pictures was to put a visual sense of what the list is actually asking for. And just connecting would be useful, I think.
Anything else?
I have sort of a general comment, and that is, sort of away from the details that we've been talking about, but I think in our committee, remember, we talked about sort of a preamble, sort of an introductory statement about how, you know, why we're doing this and what the goals are. But if I'm an architect or a designer, I'd be asking myself, what is the city expecting out of this? the city expecting out of this architectural masterpiece that I'm about to create? And if you look through all the documents, the land development code and the comp plan, you'll find certain things, certain goals that've been established by the city that relate to overall design ideas. These are kind of hard to find as you go through all these documents, but if you search hard enough, you'll find four or five of these things. And some of them are like this. One is "a community of human scale". Another one is "protection of the environment". Another one is a quote-unquote "walkable community". A fourth one is "public access to parks and water". The fifth one is "community with heart". These are all things that are written down in the documents that relate to the city's vision for what this city should be. And here we're talking about major projects here when we're talking about this, what we're doing here today. And would it be helpful if these guidelines might be established in some way in order to direct the designers and give them some perspective about, you know, what the city has in mind?
I think that would be a very good idea. And I think that when these, when this idea turns into a regulatory document, I think that probably, like you said, one of the first things that needs to be in there is an explanation as to why we're doing this and what we expect to see. And without that, I think it helps give perspective. And without that, you don't have that perspective, or it's not as easy to convey just through a set of regulations. I have no issues with that.
In the comp plan, when we have our hearings and you give us materials, you always give us the land development code sections. Very rarely do I see you giving us a comp plan section. Following up on what Richard is saying there, I would find it very helpful if there's some overarching things that relate to every project.
So maybe that can be clarified a little bit, because in the staff reports that you get for your cases, there is a comp plan analysis where we pull the direct language from the comp plan sections and put it in the report and then identify how it is compatible or is incompatible. I guess I'm not clear as to more than that, what you're wanting?
So there may be a section that directly relates to this. I'm talking about overall, the overarching policies of the city that Mr. Donnelly was talking about.
I understand. Yes, this is some of the things that you just called out, where it provides vision statements or at least some sort of intent behind the policy.
Yeah.
I understand what you're asking for.
And I just think that's such an excellent summary of that, that that ought to be the introduction to why we're doing what we're doing to the council, to say, here are the guiding principles that we use that come out of our own law and our own documents to enable both the zoning board and the council to be able to make decisions that meet these goals. And I just, I think that was beautifully put. And I would hope that when we go to the council, that that's the opening statement of the presentation of this, these suggestions.
Yeah. Just to continue with that a little bit, in answer, the applicant should have to answer each one of these items, what he's done, he or she has done to satisfy that.
They do, they do provide their own analysis for the comp plan, but I think we probably have to make a modification if we're looking at more general vision statements. But that's, that can all be changed.
Mr. Rooney, is that the visioning part of the plan? We could base a decision in part on the visioning part? Or are we limited?
It's complicated, is the easiest answer to give. The land development regulations are designed and statutorily mandated to implement the policies, objectives, and goals of the comprehensive plan. You are not supposed to develop hard standards effectively in your comp plan. Basically, they're not, comp plan provisions are not supposed to take a regulatory form, the way they do in the land development regulation. They are supposed to be that intent, that visioning. Now, generally, what we do is in most, particularly in conditional use permits and things like that, we will have a provision applying, looking for consistency with the comprehensive plan, because all development orders are supposed to be reviewed consistent with the comprehensive plan. In fact, it's a strict scrutiny standard. So the answer is where it's clearly definable in the plan. You can hold, you can use the plan as a land development regulation effectively. You can say, you have not met this standard in the plan, even if it's less clear in the land development regulations. But that's a sort of a moving target, because your comprehensive plan generally doesn't give you enough detail to say this is a clear violation. It's implemented through those land development regulations. Now, where that, where that would not be the case would be your future land uses. If you have a residential future land use and you try to put a commercial use in there, well, that's clearly not in compliance with the comprehensive plan. So it depends on what the actual issue is, what the product is that you're looking at.
Are there any other questions? Any other comments? Has everybody said what they want to say?
Yes. I really want to say, I think you, put together this way, I think it should be a very persuasive presentation.
No pressure now. No pressure now.
No, no pressure.
So there's one more. Before we adjourn, there is one item, and that is, we are going to have a meeting next week.
We are, okay.
There's a case. And you will get us the materials in a timely fashion?
The online version of the packet is already available on the city's website. A link's going to be sent to you where you can access it. The hard copies are being printed as we speak, so they should be available either by the end of the day or first thing in the morning. But you can, you can see everything right now on the city site.
Can you just tell us what this case is so that we know?
Sure. Yeah. It's a, it's a...
If it's on the line, it's...
Yep. It's an animal hospital, daycare facility, and boarding facility, going near an industrial area off of 41.
This is all for dogs, daycare for dogs?
Daycare for...
Well, the animal hospital portion is dogs or cats or whatever animals. But the daycare portion is, yes, dogs.
A mixture of humans and two-legged and four-legged.
Correct. Yes, where they all come together and hang out and party. Yes.
Anybody else have anything to say before we adjourn? Do I hear a motion to adjourn? We are adjourned.